conducts a thorough budget review and certification process. Additionally, the TSCC holds public budget hearings like this one to engage with district leadership and provide additional opportunity for public comment before the budget is adopted. I will now ask my fellow commissioners and the staff to introduce themselves and state if they have any business relationships that could be perceived as a conflict of interests.
My name is Rita Moore. This is my first year on the commission. I'm a former policy analyst for the state and I have no conflicts.
Hello, Matt Donahue, fourth year on the commission, serving as vice chair. My day job is as a municipal bond investment banker and financial advisor and I have no conflicts with the port.
Good morning. My name is Todd Burton. This is my second year on the on the commission and in my former life I was a finance officer, investment officer for a number of public jurisdictions here in the in the region. I have no direct business with the port, but I am a frequent flyer and like the new airport.
I'm Allegra Willhite, executive director with TSCC.
And I'm Brittany Abiari, the budget analyst for TSCC.
Again, I'm Harmony Kidos. This is my seventh and final year with TSCC. In my other life, I was a teacher and I still work in K to 12 science education. I also don't have any business relationship with the port. I do love the new airport and we got a great tour of the new terminal last spring and I, or last fall? Did we go in the fall? Summer.
Summer, yeah.
Summer, almost a year ago, but I use every fact I learned every time I walk through the airport with someone new. I'm like, did you know the Y is in the airport? And they'll swing two feet in either direction. So happy to be here and talk to everybody about that. It's true. You should, I'll make one of you walk through there.
I did not get the tour.
I'll walk Rita through. I will walk Rita.
We got you, Rita.
The port representatives, please introduce themselves.
Great. I'm Curtis Robinhold, executive director of the port. It's great to have you here today and I'll let Antoinette and then maybe executive team members if we could, because we're going to ask them to answer most of your questions today. It's a great kind of phone a friend on purpose.
Okay. Great to see everyone. Thank you all for being here. Antoinette Chandler, CFO, and just looking forward to today's discussion.
Dan, can we start with you and work this one?
Sure. Dan Blafus, chief legal officer.
Good morning. Mayra Reola, chief share prosperity officer.
I'm Vince Granato and I'm the chief projects officer.
Christina Kelchner, chief development services officer.
Good morning. Dan Pipinger, I'm the chief aviation officer for the port.
Good morning. Kimberly Branham, chief trade and economic development officer at the port.
Morning. I'm Dave Robertson. I'm the chief public affairs officer here at the port.
Welcome, everyone.
Harmony, if I can, I'm just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I also want to note we have two of our port commissioners here, Commissioner Ruca Adams and Commission President Katie Kova.
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here. We'll start with any introductory remarks from the port, after which we'll hear public comment, then we'll ask our questions and discuss the budget with you. We're looking forward to a robust conversation as always that we have here at the port. As a reminder, we only have a short time with you today, so we encourage you to speak directly and openly and keep the reading of any written comments brief to allow for more back and forth discussion. I'll now turn the floor over to executive director Curtis Robinhold.
Great, yeah.
Well, I'm going to hand it to Antoinette, but thank you. It's great to have you here. As I think you're all familiar, Rita, maybe not quite yet, but I hope you will experience it. We are absolutely engaged and interested in answering your questions. If you've got them along the way, please adjust. I'm not big fans of the written response either, so really happy to ask Antoinette to do a little bit of intro and then we'll get into questions.
Okay. Thank you again. Delighted to be here. So I will try to keep my remarks brief, but I think everybody sitting behind me knows that that is a challenge for me, but we're going to work it out. I just want to say, my God, what a difference a year makes. I think the operative word for me this past year has just been resilience. And I think not just me, but everybody who sits behind me in this room, next to me, the support of our commissioners and everything. It has been quite the year, but we've done some great work over the past year. We've moved tremendously with purpose. We have, you're going to hear a little bit about where we are with our mass timber housing innovation campus, progress on that. You're going to hear a little bit about where we are with Terminal Six, our container operations. I know you have some questions about that. And just comparing last year, we had a pretty robust conversation about that. So I'm just delighted that we've been able to stay focused on that work and make progress and continue to work towards financial sustainability, particularly on the general fund side. We have been busy. We've put together a new five-year strategic plan that talks about, you know, really centers, continues to center the port around purpose and people and just making sure that as we know the arc of the work that we have in front of us, that we're going to stay diligent and focused on that work. And I would say, you know, as we're moving into this environment of AI, right? Lots of move, lots of change, but lots certainly, lots of development on the horizon. You know, we had to step back this year also and be thoughtful about an IT roadmap and thinking about where we want to be. So we're just starting to think about our, our systems, our financial systems, the integration of some of those systems and how they would support us being in a place where we can really take advantage of opportunities around AI. And so we're doing that work just on the infancy stages of that, but certainly we'll be moving into that as you all continue to meet with us in the coming years. And then lastly, I would just say that of all those accomplishments that we're going to talk about here, obviously, the big one with our airport completing Phase One was monumental. It was huge for us and we're continuing that work on Phase Two. I think just the testament of this organization and this leadership team and how we think about our future is really our ability to navigate kind of this uncertain terrain, right? It's been a tough year, at least the back half of this fiscal year, but I'm just proud of the work that we've done and our ability over the past few months to just continue to stay focused on people, place, and our purpose here. So with that, I am going to open up, turn it back over to you, Harmony, and the rest of the TSCC, and we can start the questions and the conversation.
I'm going to start with public comment or offer it. I will now call on any members of the public who'd like to speak. Each person is limited to three minutes of time and we'll let you know when you're nearing the end of your time. Allegra, do we have any members of the public signed up to testify?
We have no one signed up in advance. If there is anyone in the room who came in late and would like to testify, please just indicate by raising your hand. Seeing none, no public comment for today.
It's a nice change. We had 17 people at the city yesterday, so happy to dive right into our questions. Last, and I have the first one. Last summer, the newly renovated main terminal at PDX opened. We got to get a good tour of it, like I mentioned. Now nine months in with the new space, we're curious, have you seen any changes to visitor or passenger numbers that you think might be attributable to the new renovations?
Good morning, commissioners. Dan Pipinger here again. Let me start by thanking you all for flying through PDX and Rita, I'm your guy. I'll, I'll take care of it. The answer to that is no, we don't really know that for sure. It's too hard to discern why people are traveling specifically. We do anecdotally hear from a lot of people that they're coming early to spend more time in the terminal, which generally will translate to increased non-airline revenue. And people are, when they're arriving, are lingering in the terminal much longer as well. That we hear because people talk about it when you're out there with them, but we can't really discern whether we have an increase in travel because of the facility itself.
We know Phase Two is anticipated to be complete in spring of '26, so just another year. What kind of changes do you anticipate in terms of operational impact, staffing, operating costs, once the core projects are fully complete?
That's a great question. So last year, when we knew we were going to open in August, we built into the budget increased both staffing and maintenance costs, janitorial, things of that nature. And we do expect, and those are tracking to budget this year. So we feel really good. We have a good handle on, you know, the per square footage cost and the needs that we have for both maintenance staff and other services. So this coming year, we have a modest increase as well for the increased square footage. We don't anticipate as much staffing impacts, but we definitely will have some cost increases. So those are built into this budget that you're looking at today.
So in terms of, you said people are staying longer, lingering, or getting there earlier. I mean, my anecdote, I was at the Loyal Legion and there were people there not flying. They were just there to go to the bar, which is a pretty cool spot, you know? Have you seen increased revenues through your vendors in the airport, the new ones after the post renovation?
Yes, the, the pre-security concessions are doing quite fine, but they did quite fine before we did the project itself, right? The airport's always been a welcome place. We used to have that Oregon mall where people shopped quite a bit. They'd come out and do their Christmas shopping. Because we have street pricing, I think the people that understand that, you know, it's just easier to go to the airport and hit a bunch of shops. So we don't have as much pre-security programming as we used to before, but overall concessions are up. But whether they're attributable to the, there's another question a little later on the Alaska schedule change, exactly why they're up, like what components are due to change in passenger volume versus people coming? Can't quite discern that yet either.
This is more of a curiosity. I fly out of, I think it's the B terminal, which is the far right for mostly Alaska. So with the new Phase Two, when it's done, there'll be passenger exits where you're not going all the way to the center of the concourse. But will that still be used? You have those beautiful seats that people are, you know, using all the time on the grandstand. You kind of feel like you're on a football stadium, you know, people clapping as you walk out of the airport. Is that still going to be exit as well for passengers using other parts of the airport?
It is not. So that is a temporary exit. We do, you know, intend to still use that space for, you know, passengers and music and things of that nature. But right now, that's in direct conflict with the entry of everyone into the terminal, right? So as we grow, that's untenable to have everybody meeting in that dead center space. There are times of the day you're out there and it doesn't seem like it's a big deal and there are times you're out there in the day, you're like, this is crazy. So we will exit them similar to where we were before on the wings. And I don't know if you were here from the earlier presentation, but actually there's large holes we've cut in the emplining floor to go down to bag claim. So as you come out the exit doors, if you're going to bag claim, you're going to go straight down instead of trying to transit across the ticket lobby. So we're, we're really working hard to de-conflict the flows of passengers in the terminal.
So will that then include some sort of, well, area for people who are receiving passengers who can't go?
Yes, there will be a friends and family area at both the exit lanes with the original carpet put in. I think that's correct. I'm looking for Vince. So people can take their selfies of their feet on the carpet and there'll be some amenities and some restrooms right there as well. So I think it'll be a much nicer experience of waiting for somebody to come in, but it won't be the stadium seating, unfortunately.
You just reminded me, I actually have a carpet T-shirt that I should have worn. Didn't even occur to me.
Next year.
Next year, yeah. I do have a question about the mall, because I kind of miss the mall. Do you have any plans to increase the, the shopping area in the, before security, pre-security?
Yes, we do not. After 9/11, passenger behavior changed dramatically. People now are really anxious to get through security and that's where they're spending their money. So just the entire kind of ecosystem of airports changed after 9/11 and we can only support so much pre-security. And if we overbuild in those areas, the businesses won't thrive.
Fair enough.
I just like, I think the, you have all done such a good job of leaving, of presenting a good first impression and a, a good lasting, last impression of Portland for visitors to the, to the region. I hear it from visitors that come to see me and our family and it's, I just, I like to highlight that, you know, it's, Portland sometimes has this, Portland is struggling with its reputation. So nice to have the airport kind of bookend some of that reputation. Go ahead, Todd.
And I have to say, this is a really comfortable chair. Do you mind if I hang out here for a little while?
We had a long day.
But this one is really, yeah.
We're so happy to be in the port. We're so happy to be here.
So I hope this isn't a dumb question. We wanted to ask you about potential reductions or real reductions in the federal workforce that would also include reductions in air traffic control, controllers. And obviously, that's been in the news a lot lately, especially if you're out on the East Coast. We're curious if the port has any role when it comes to staffing, staffing for air traffic control as well as technology for air traffic control? And do you have some sort of projection about what the, the appropriate staffing levels are?
Great question. You know, we work really close with three particular federal agencies and then I'll move into the FAA and that's Customs and Border Protection, which processes international flights, the Transportation Security Administration, which of course is doing the security for people coming into the facility itself, and then finally the FAA. I would just say overall, and I'll again go into a little detail on the FAA, we haven't seen any impacts on staffing or operational capability. We definitely on the FAA side are very keen on the staff of FAA, generally up in Seattle, who are processing federal grants and making approvals for certain improvements at the airport. They've been very responsive and in fact, I think we're very pleased with the work they're doing. But we don't have any nexus with the tower and air traffic control. We certainly liaise with them and work with them on safety issues, but have no influence on that. I will point out Portland is one of the few places where we believe there is no staffing shortage in air traffic control. And the DOT publishes that information. That's where we get it. We also know anecdotally they're, they're more or less fully staffed and things have gone well. So we've had no operational impacts and we don't really anticipate any here in Portland.
Then comment on TSA and Customs, the staffing for that, is that the same?
It is. They're doing fine. I think the worry for me is the, the morale of the TSA staff if they're not sure about what the future is going to bring. Customs and Border Protection, usually they're sworn officers. It's a, it's a more, you know, invested workforce in terms of time and service and professional. Our TSA workforce here is spectacular. We have a great relationship with them and they're generally local folks, right? They're not moving around the country for the most part. So I think the uncertainty about the future of federal workforce is grinding on them a little bit, but we haven't seen any impacts here.
So as far as the technology for air traffic control, because that's been in the news a lot, is it uniform throughout the, the system or are different airports more upgraded than other airports or why are there problems in some airports and not others?
You know, that, I can sort of guess at that answer, but I don't want to. I'm not that familiar with the different technologies they're using. I would say that the general feeling is system-wide, the technology is old technology. We have a relatively new facility, but the technology inside of it is probably standard for the FAA. And that is something they need to upgrade in addition to the staffing situation.
And plane passengers at PDX are getting closer to the pre-pandemic 10 million threshold. Can you tell us more about Alaska's recent schedule operations change at PDX and what impacts it will have for the region and the airport? And how do you anticipate this impact, how this might impact revenue?
That's, that's a great question. So Alaska's schedule change roughly is they've moved to what we call a hub operation here at Portland. And that means instead of the arrivals and departures being like a gentle wave throughout the day, they're very sharp distinct peaks and they occur five times in a day. And so arriving flights and departing flights are pretty much all coming within an hour and a half to two-hour window. So when you look out at the Loyal Legion, when you're having a nice drink and you look out at the airfield, it's either empty on the C concourse or it's completely full. What that is doing is it's bringing connecting passengers who are not originating in Portland or have a destination in Portland. It's bringing those connecting passengers to Portland to catch another flight. So think Boise, Spokane, Medford, maybe San Francisco, if you're headed up to Anchorage or going to Hawaii. Those passengers are now coming into the airport, deplaning, staying post-security, and then replanning and departing. When that happens, the, Alaska has upgauged some of the aircraft and we have some additional regional and farther domestic destinations added to that. So we're seeing an increase in origin and destination passengers and we're seeing an increase in connecting passengers who never leave the secure part of the facility. It's very hard for us to tell right now what the financial impact of that. We know concession sales on concourse C and B, where Alaska is, is up the most, right? Because people are there. But they're also not there now for certain periods of time. So it's going to take us a while to really figure out what the real impact is. And we're also having to look at impacts on the roadway, janitorial, the security checkpoints, right? Because it's just changing the surge of passengers and when they show up. So things are going really well. I know it's exceeding their expectations and we are definitely seeing a revenue increase, but, but pulling out exactly who's causing the revenue increase is still a little tricky for us right now. You bet.
Yeah. And what we've really done over the past couple of years is we've become a lot more robust with our passenger survey and our advanced analytics. And so we've just completed a year, we've got a year going on, a second year's worth of data. And so some of the questioning in that passenger survey will help us get after and kind of identify the reasons why people are here, if again, it's a connector and the extent to which some of the behaviors around shopping, particularly on the connecting side, post-security. So we're already starting to see some trends. So we'll definitely look forward when we meet with you all next year to share with you some of those insights from our passenger survey.
We've talked a lot over the last five years about this pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, what are the, what are the trends moving forward? And I remember last year we talked a lot about how leisure's bounced back quite a bit faster than business and I'm curious if that trend is still, still following or if we're seeing kind of more of a rebalancing as we just kind of, as things get farther and farther away from the, the lowest points.
Yeah. I would say that we're seeing an increase in business travel. We feel like it's, certain segments of business travel are coming back. And I think we've seen a little bit of softening in leisure travel over the last couple of months just because of the uncertainty in the economy, but it isn't dramatic. So I know there's a lot in the press about travel and what people are doing. We've been really steady, but I think over the past year, we definitely have seen the uptick in people, business traveling. I think you can read it in the local news too, when you think about Nike and their desire to get back out and see their customers. So I think that trend is really positive for us right now.
So last year, we talked about how the port was having some difficulty filling some positions and for behavioral health clinicians, I think might be the term, and to, to address situations, you know, people at the airport are having mental health crises. So can you talk about how recruitment for those clinicians has gone over the last year? What has worked? What maybe you saw didn't work, what you can do better and how the, how the retention of those folks has been going?
Yeah. Thank you. I'm really pleased that you're asking this question because it's something I'm very proud of. We were successful in hiring two clinicians last October and they have been with us since then with no turnover. And we've had 242 contacts with the clinicians. They generally are accompanying the police for calls or getting dispatched to calls. And they're providing services that, you know, a police force can't provide. So some of the variety of services we've been providing to people we come in contact with include transport to shelter, mental health holds, voluntary hospitalization, basic needs of food, water, and clothing, and then medical and mental health care. And so, you know, some days it's busier than others, but I think having that skillset now where we can actually connect people with services, it's a much better pathway, I think, for our community and, you know, addressing some of these issues that we have to really get people connected instead of just trying to either move them along or, you know, cite them for behavior that we don't want to see, right? It's really like, what's the long-term outlook? So it's a good program. It's stable. We're having great success with it and we're really proud of it.
So being a 24/7 operation here at the airport, are there certain hours that you're staffing that with the clinicians that might not be your normal nine to five hours?
That's right. You know, 20, we can't cover 24/7 with two people. So I don't know what the actual shifts are, but I know that they move them around. For the first couple of months, we had them like on day shift, so they got used to the airport and the conditions. And I think mostly, I don't want to guess the time periods that we have them, but we move those shifts around depending on demand and where we see it. And I think the, the team of the two clinicians who are through Cascadia Health are super flexible to do that and, because really the goal is that connection. So, you know, if we're not having a lot of activity in the middle of the day, it's mostly in the morning or the night, that's when we need them on shift and that's what we do.
I'm, I'm curious about the, I don't quite know how to put this. How would you characterize the people who are requiring this kind of intervention? Are they, are they passengers or are they community members who are showing up at the airport?
The vast majority are community members showing up at the airport who don't have housing.
Okay. We read a lot during the pandemic about bad behavior by passengers. So I wasn't here at the meeting last year, so that's what occurred to me when I saw this question. Has that bad behavior pattern, was it present here in PDX ever? And have you seen any changes, any improvements?
Bad behavior at airports has been around since airports have been around. So I wouldn't say that we've had a proclivity of it, like where we feel like we have some kind of epidemic we're dealing with. We still have occasional bad behavior, mostly involves alcohol. But overall, I wouldn't say it's a huge issue for us. It's one we have to respond to for public safety, but it's not something that is kind of high on my list of like concerns about what's going on at the airport.
Can I, can I just add a little bit here to Dan's answer, Rita? Just by way of background, we do have our own police force and sworn officers who are responsible primarily for PDX, but also the areas surrounding PDX. And we have our own fire department, so that is strictly here at PDX. And they also have EMTs. What we found in this period during the pandemic is that we were poorly equipped for the non-violent, non-emergency situations, but where people had needs that we were not prepared to handle. If you think sort of non-emergency needs in the city and Portland Street Response was sort of the model or cahoots down in Eugene. And so it's a really, I think, thoughtful approach to try to figure out. It was not something that we were able to do at the time. We would have loved to rely on the city or the county to cover that because they were also short on resources. We felt we had a gap we had to step into. The team, I think, is really happy about where we've gotten to. I'll note, one of the ancillary benefits when our behavioral health professionals aren't available, our fire and, and police staff have also kind of up their game. They've learned from these pros about strategies and to Todd's question earlier, you know, it has made us better. Still situations that are uncomfortable and we prefer not to have, but of course, don't get to choose the situations that you're in. So we get those folks who are really primarily not passengers. Oftentimes will arrive on the MAX train and get off and be in need of services of one kind or another that Dan mentioned. But it was essentially a gap-filling exercise that we tried to use so that we didn't have a armed police response at every case or to call out the fire department every time it was needed. I'd say in large part, and Dan can correct me here, the behavioral health technicians are working in concert with our on-the-ground first responders.
Do you have any relationship with the Monloma County Deflection Center or the deflection kind of process that is now in place or has been in place for the last? deflection kind of process that is now in place or has been in place for the last nine months?
Our police department has, you know, connections, has always had those connections with other jurisdictions in the county for diversion for people. And usually, it's an acute case in that circumstance. I think the Cascadia members that we have hired have more long-term connections to maybe some of these deflection programs that are more, not, you know, 24-hour, 48-hour, but more long-term development. So I think we have both capabilities now. But before, it was very short-term for us, right? That's the connections we had.
So is there budget savings for this approach as well? Because I imagine a health clinician is a less expensive employee than a, no, they're not. Okay.
It doesn't.
That's a bad assumption.
It's an additive skill set that we need. Just, I think Curtis explained it quite well. It doesn't take the place of what we need to do for public safety and security at the airport. You know, the police have a much broader mission than just that. It's anti-terrorism. We have crime at the airport, just like every jurisdiction, all of those things as well. That hasn't lessened. That's just work we have to do. And so this is an additive thing that is an increased cost to the airport.
The next one. We understand you made use of a budget-shared prosperity tool in last year's budget process. We'd like to hear more about how that's being used in its second year. What would you highlight as the successes? And where did you experience challenges?
Thank you. I'll take the response for that question. So in its second year of implementing this tool, there continued to be some great learnings. First of all, you know, the first year, it was primarily around people understanding the tool, getting familiarized with the tool. And there was a lot of learning from an implementation standpoint of how to make it more accessible, easier to follow, and also how we were collecting data to then aggregate and provide insights. On this second year, we were able to strengthen the partnership between the culture and strategy and the finance team working together to improve, you know, customer experience with the tool. And then also, we increased our ability to understand better how this tool, like any other tool, is influencing decision-making when it comes to budgetary allocations, right? And how really ultimately a budget is a physical representation of an organization's values and beliefs, right? And so how we're able to then analyze that information, which has been primarily focused on the operational side of the budget, and showcase how directly or indirectly these allocations impact our mission or help us advance our mission. For the, you know, moving forward, we expect that we're going to get more efficient about how this tool is being used and continue to enhance our ability to analyze, you know, again, where are we putting our money, what's happening, because we invested in X, Y, and Z from a small amount to, you know, big, big investment. And also, how are we benefiting, you know, consultants, or businesses, or people we work with and bring into our work through those tools? And what analysis are we bringing as to how we're making those opportunities more accessible and increase our ability to then support, you know, that part of the economy?
Do you have an example of, and I think we asked this again last year, do you have an example of a different decision being made because of the tool, or a way kind of a, and correct my language, the shared prosperity kind of informed decision-making? Are there specific examples of how it's playing out?
There are plenty, but I will say, I don't have like a specific one. I will say in generality that this category is right. And so I think one simple way that we can look at it is catering services, right? Like, we do sometimes a lot of catering. And so for some of us, we'll be like, well, we're just going to go use the one that we used all the time. And that's great. And there are also a lot of other diverse, really interesting up-and-coming catering opportunities that we can pay a little bit more attention. And that's a super simple, you know, tactical way. But there are other ways in which we look at consulting services, or we look at, you know, how we're supporting other organizations that are aligned with our mission, and how much are we allocating to partnerships or contracts, you know, with other organizations or communities that are aligned with the organizations, with the communities we serve. And so there, it can be very simple and tactical, or it can be very nuanced and layered in composition. But I will say primarily, we have seen an increase in how, again, like how we're thinking about the value of our money, and who's getting access to those dollars that is maximizing economic impact in the region.
So in the last couple of years in your budget, you've talked about establishing a learning culture here at the port. So just would like you to tell us more about that and kind of what it means in the tangible, operational sense for the port.
I'll take that question again. So this is a priority that the entire executive team and our strategic planning is still very much a priority for us. So we conducted an organizational-wide assessment where we, you know, collected a lot of information about what are those areas of opportunities to continue to build leadership skills, management skills, any type of skills that are needed for the job. Based on that information, we then developed a three-year platform of priorities that we want to implement across the board. Again, but then we took that platform, said, where do we start? Because it can be really big and vast and need and opportunity on supporting staff. So with that information and through that platform, there were some revisions of existing programs that we were already offering through Cornerstone or online opportunities. And then we also built some additional development around leadership management, and we supported a specific cohort of senior leaders as well to learn more about organizational-wide issues and opportunities for leadership development. There are some things that we've improved our new employee orientation. Sorry, I want, there's some numbers I don't want to let go, so I'm going to be looking at it. So we provided, provided trainings, and we offered 17 workshops with 153 participants. We piloted the Leadership Academy, a Leadership Academy with PSU, where we've had two cohorts already. And it's for people managers in particular, and we've had so far 30 to 35 participants. And the ELDP, or the Executive Leadership Development Program, for 12 participants that we concluded also recently. And then based on all these efforts, we are about to embark on a kind of debriefing program for ourselves. So like, what worked, what didn't work, what else could we offer? How can we continue to enhance our ability to provide those opportunities for staff?
So is the goal to increase job satisfaction, because employees are learning on the job? Is it to have more sort of internal, you know, promotions with people moving up the ranks in the port?
I will say primarily is to lean into the culture of learning and continuously provide opportunities for skill development, leadership development, and a better, wider understanding of the business opportunities at the port. And that should be throughout, right? There's people managers, specific tracks, there's staff, you know, incoming staff that are just getting them more familiar with the organization as a whole. And in some cases, yes, you know, what would it look like, what are the skills, capacity, and leadership development characteristics that an organization like ours, or organizations in general, look at when looking at advancement opportunities? So those really depends on when are they available, and, you know, how do we prepare staff to be able to be competitive for those opportunities? But there's no guarantee that because somebody's taking a training, therefore, you know, the opportunity is going to be a given.
Do you mind if I just add on? I think Myra's answer was dead on. I would note for us organizationally, Matt, we're also, we just talked last week as an executive team, we had some time away together and talked about whether it's Walt Whitman or Ted Lasso, that you are following here on being curious and not judgmental, that for us organizationally, the more we lean into this learning sense, that we're being more curious about business opportunities. We still want to focus on execution and efficiency. But if we can enter with an open mind, if we can have people who think that that's part of the job, this learning aspect, that all those elements described by Myra are additive for us for outcomes, for business outcomes.
I could talk about, ask questions about the airport all day long, because I love the airport. But we're going to talk about Terminal 2, and something you brought up last year, and Antoinette, you brought up in your opening remarks. There's approximately $22 million in your capital budget for industrial and economic development projects. Most of this, we believe, is going to the Mass Timber and Housing Innovation Campus. We'd love to hear an update from you, from our discussion last year, and as well as what is the status for grant funding for that project?
And I'll take that one. Very live mic. Okay, I'll take that one. Great question, very timely. So as a reminder, Terminal 2 is 39 acres, and we have a pretty bold vision of this Mass Timber Housing and Innovation Campus. And over the last year, the team has worked hard to refine both the, just the planning for how we can sequence it in a way that advances the vision while also protects our financial interests. And so one of the things that we've done that's been really important is to identify a phased approach. And so the two phases will be complementary, but they can be independent from one another. So we're focused now on the first phase, and that could take us through 2028, 2029, 2030, depending on when we see demand for the second phase. But what that enables us to do is to use the grant resources that we've received from the EDA, from HUD, from the state of Oregon, to focus on infrastructure, on the vertical site, I'm sorry, on the horizontal site readiness, while we are also working to tenant and secure partners for the vertical development. So pleased to share that as of today, our board just approved, and we now have tenants for all of our buildings between U of O with their Acoustics Lab and ZOG taking over building 205 for their interim facilities. And then now we'll be building, using 205, they will build out their permanent manufacturing center there. So that's underway. And we also need to do some site stabilization work. The RFP to do that work is out on the street. And there are a number of improvements that we'll need to make to the campus frontage and access improvements. We'll do those in the first phase. They'll have benefits for both phases, and those should also be out, the RFP should also be out this summer. So lots of progress, still a good amount of work to do. But you should start to see those buildings open in '26, '27, and '28. So we'd love to do a tour at some point. We know that it's hard to compete with the incredible airport, but we're happy to take people around, because it's really innovative, and will have benefits for the campus, of course, but for our broader region as well.
Can you describe a little more about the second part of the project, which is the housing innovation?
Oh, great, yes.
And how that sort of fits into this?
Yes, yes. So what ZOG Timber Solutions will be manufacturing is contributing to and up to 700 units of housing a year. Right now, they're focused on supporting affordable housing. They could support workforce housing. They could also support industrial or commercial development. But their pipeline right now is really focused on affordable housing. And one of the things that we know, so the genesis for the idea came before my time, but was understanding the really dire situation that communities were in after the fires in 2020, I believe. Looking for, yeah, in 2020, and recognizing how long it can take to produce housing. And prefabricated mass timber housing takes less time, can take less time. It also has a lighter environmental footprint. And so we wanted to, given the natural resources within our region, really showcase and add some just energy towards making sure that that could happen to both address future crises. But right now, since we know that we have so many fewer housing units than we need as a city, as a region, as a state, we also think that this will help contribute to making it easier to produce housing more quickly, that's still cost-effective and also sustainable.
The only thing that I would add to that, because there was a component in there about the grant funding.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yep. And so we're looking at between 15 and 20 million in additional grant funding that will be available to us, as Kimberly mentioned, through either EDA, HUD, or the state of Oregon.
And just, thank you, Antoinette. We are in conversation with both of our federal and state partners. They have reviewed our request for proposals, so we haven't seen any disruption in those grant agreements. And so those are critical investments to both of the RFPs that will be released. And so those are proceeding as anticipated.
Portland Public Schools just got its bond passed, and they're contemplating rebuilding three high schools, and then maybe doing other work in addition. But at least one of the high schools is being designed for mass timber construction. Has there been any collaboration, communication between you guys and the school district?
You know, not that I'm aware of directly, but we also know that ZOG has been responding to requests for proposals. And so, you know, their pipeline is confidential, but there are other public actors that they have successfully bid into. And so we can follow up with you on that question. But I think part of what we are trying to do, and it's just a great reminder that we need to do this with all of our public partners, is to increase awareness about the technology so that people can evaluate it and include it potentially in RFPs, or just understand that it is available. Thanks.
Antoinette, you mentioned, and I think you did too, about grant funding from federal sources. Are you finding that grant, so much of that is at risk, depending on the use of those funds? Are you finding it, because it's for infrastructure really, and housing and development, are you finding that an easier path than maybe other agencies that are looking for grant funding for other purposes? Do you think that's a priority of the administration and the federal government?
It would be very dangerous for me to take any position about what I think the administration is going to do. So I won't go there. But what I will respond to and assure you, when the executive orders were, you know, coming out, when there was just a lot of talk about the posture of federal funding and who gets funded, who gets funded, our team really came together and looked and did a pretty exhaustive diagnostic of our current grant portfolio, looking at it on the general fund side, which Kimberly just described, but also on the FAA side, because we get a pretty significant amount of grant funding there. And so fortunately, you know, we did kind of the risk analysis, if you will, on our grant portfolio, and pretty low risk in terms of any jeopardy around the FAA grants. And just as Kimberly described as well, I think, given where we are with the infrastructure and the understanding and the importance of housing and bringing innovation to the region, we feel pretty strongly that those funds won't be in jeopardy. I can't promise that, but certainly, you know, we feel pretty confident about where we are.
I might just add, just from a strategic level, two overriding, I think, themes for us around our grants in particular. One, more uncertainty about what the future looks like, how much we're able to rely on long-term plans that included some buckets in the future. And second, probably lower numbers, including in infrastructure. I expect you hear this across the public sphere of the other agencies you talk with. But we're just trying to think about being in a constrained environment, and what that means for our long-term planning. Again, as Antoinette rightly points out, we're seeing less of that in aviation than the rest. But we're definitely feeling this uncertainty about what's going to be in and what's going to be not in. And the overall number is likely going to be smaller for the time being, looking forward.
I think that's kind of consistent, what we've heard through some of our other meetings with many other jurisdictions. When it comes to capital and infrastructure, there seems to be a little more ease than maybe for other kinds of services that grant funding would pay for.
We're going to continue with the federal theme. Tariffs. This budget does not anticipate any impact from tariffs, although the budget message notes that the port is ready to pivot and change its budget as needed to adjust a federal trade policy. Are you seeing any change in volume in marine shipping, air cargo, passengers, international passengers at this point? And what are you expecting in the coming months, based on what we know right now?
Antoinette, did you want me to start, and then you can do the budget? So tariffs, it's definitely been a major focus, similar to what Antoinette mentioned. We've had a cross-functional group within the port who's been looking at this. We've had a cross-functional group within the port who's been looking at this on a weekly basis. We also convened with our state agency partners, so Ag and Business Oregon, to really understand what other agencies are seeing because of how important trade is to Oregon's economy. We have, on the marine side, I would say, for me personally, it's been surprising how little impact there has been on volume for our dry goods, for our bulk goods, for grain, for potash, soda ash, as well as for our autos. You know, just given a 25% tariff, it seems like you would, you would see a decrease. So far, we have not seen that in our projections for next year. Based on our conversations with our tenants, we're not projecting a decrease. The exception to that is on the container side. And so, while the majority of our exports go to Korea, which, and in April, the announcements of the 100-plus percentage tariffs did have an impact on our May volumes, so we saw a 20% reduction of containers coming through Terminal 6 in May. And we are anticipating some continued impacts. There's just so much uncertainty. I mean, there's uncertainty in all the ways, because now you have legal action. So we're paying, we're paying a lot of attention to this, we're in regular conversation with all of our customers. And in terms of Terminal 6, there's nothing that is giving us pause over the ultimate viability of container operations at Terminal 6. And that's partly because the operator that we are anticipating bringing on, if the board is supportive, also continues to be optimistic about the long-term, long-term trajectory. On the aviation cargo side, we haven't seen any impacts. But, you know, I want to reserve the right to say, all of this has changed, I think, Antoinette. We have active conversations about this, so hopefully, we'll be able to say the same thing a year from now. So, Antoinette, if you want to speak to the budget process.
Yeah, I think Kimberly has characterized this really well. So we just continue to model what we think based on new information, what the financial implications will be. And so, that's one of the reasons why we characterize it as we'll be prepared to pivot, looking at scenario A, B, C, and D, in terms of the final outcome. I would, I would also say that I want to remind you all that in the budget, we did take a little bit of a conservative posture, as Kimberly has described, what we think could happen go forward, whether it's the implications of the tariff and what impact that's going to have on volume. We took the posture that we would budget in what would be a full-year loss in the event that we maintain the same levels, or slightly right around the same levels of volume. But we also knew that, as Kimberly will talk about next, is if we were not able to successfully, for whatever reason, move forward with identifying a third-party operator and we shut down, what does that scenario look like? And so, we wanted to make sure that in the budget, we captured that kind of worst-case scenario, if you will. We are certainly, I won't say optimistic, but we've done a lot of work and a lot of analysis to figure out how best to absorb some of that shock, if you will, even in the event of having a third-party operator, and what the financial implications would be of that. The other thing that we did is we stepped back and looked across our marine portfolio and did an analysis of kind of the variable in fixed revenue, because we have lease revenue that may not be tied to the volume activity, not necessarily tied to the volume activity that Kimberly talked about in terms of the grain, the break bulk, potash, soda ash, and the like. And so, that creates roughly about a 50% of our revenue floor for us, right? So, in other words, we didn't, we wanted to make sure we understood, if everything went to zero, what are those financial implications? And then we can kind of, you know, move our way back up through the analysis. And worst, worst, worst-case scenario, even across the board, as you think about tariffs, and if all of that dried up, we'd be looking at an impact of about maybe seven, seven-and-a-half million dollars. And you're looking at all, if I look at all of general fund revenue combined, north of a hundred million dollars, right? So roughly 7%. It could be a little bit different if we just focus on marine. So we felt like we, we have the right understanding to be able to respond and to react accordingly.
Can I just jump in there briefly? This is absolutely the right thing for staff to be doing, is to think about how we manage impacts on the port. Is, in the context of this conversation, worth noting, the reason we care is not that we can squeeze the extra 7% out of our budget, it's that Oregon, one in eight jobs in Oregon is connected to trade. 275,000, Kimberly and Antoinette, we will manage through on the port facilities. The reason tariffs matter a lot to us is not because of the impact on the port of Portland, it's on the people of the state of Oregon and Southwest Washington. Those impacts are real. CARE is connecting Oregon importers and manufacturers and ranchers and farmers to foreign markets, because those jobs are really valuable, and Oregon is a traded sector state. So just as a note, we care, we mostly care because of the impact.
A little bit about other federal policies that might be having an impact, especially in the airport. Are you seeing any, some, some airports are reporting significant declines in international passengers. Are we seeing that at all here in Portland?
Dan, do you want to?
Sure. No, we're not. In fact, all four of our European services, two of which are seasonal, are in full swing and going gangbusters, and our highest priority is to recruit an Asia service. Curtis flew in yesterday from Korea with the Air Service Development Team, talking to an airline over there, so the fact that he's still awake is a good sign. But no, we're not really seeing that. I know that there's some discussion, especially Canadian travel, but we just haven't seen any real impact here in Portland.
So I'm glad you, Kimberly and Curtis brought up, there was an article, I think it was in KGW last night, about the 20% reduction in containers, as well as the impact on jobs, one in eight employees are affected by this. Is there an advocacy part of the port to, I know you're monitoring this, but are you also engaged at some level of advocacy about the importance of this whole tariff, lack of another better term tantrum, that's going on right now, to, to talk about the impact to real people?
Yeah. Let me, I'll ask Dave and Kimberly maybe to chime in here. The short answer is yes. There are a lot of people who are engaged and interested, and the port is more in the position of trying to help facilitate that conversation and make sure folks are well-informed. But I'll let Dave and Kimberly, you want to take?
Yeah, we'll share this one. So I mentioned that we had a partnership across our state partners, and we also partnered with Portland Business Alliance, Portland Metro Chamber, sorry, Portland Metro Chamber and Oregon Business Council, because one of the things we recognized is the facts matter. And the last state of trade report that we collectively did was in 2019. Lot, lot had changed, and so, we worked hard across those different bodies to make sure that we had the most recent fact pattern, so we could talk about why it matters, and we'll, we'll make sure that you all have that report. It's really helpful in terms of identifying what Curtis mentioned, how trade-dependent we are from a job standpoint, that we are one of only 11 states that actually has a trade surplus, that we know that trade matters across every county in the state. And interestingly, what you would see if you, you looked through the report, is that our connections with China have reduced a bit since we last looked, looked at this, and in fact, our exchange with Mexico has greatly increased. So it's interesting for us, as we think about how we're strengthening trade relationships and the impact that policy has made over the last five years. So I'll just start with that, that we wanted to make sure that as we were advocating or really informing people, that we were starting with the facts, and those were illuminating.
Hi, Dave Robertson, Chief Public Affairs Officer. So on the, the partnership side, Kimberly mentioned that, really, we've been working, so a couple of things we've been doing, in addition to having the foundation of this knowledge that you've heard Curtis and Kimberly both talk about now, and is showing up in all sorts of other public venues, like KGW and the Oregonian and other places, is to get that message out, right? And so, we've, we've built coalitions around the study itself, and putting that together with the Portland Chamber, we've had, we've spoken at and helped organize some trade forums. There was a trade forum in Salem with the Oregon Business and Industry Association. So our partnerships are not only just the broad business coalition, but also the individual groups that represent the farmers, the seed grower, the grass seed growers, the hazelnut growers, the wine growers, and the winemakers. And so, we're, we're really trying to build those concentric circles of advocacy and partnership, including our government partners at the governor's office and the business, Oregon, Business Oregon as well. And so, I think that's, that's gone quite well, and our communications team here has really helped us hone our messages around this and continually sort of stay up to date on all the changes that I think the team has talked to you about, how volatile that is and how, how much that's changing, but also make sure people, people are really looking to us to sort of talk about how this is going, and what, what's working, what's not working, what are the impacts. So your questions are right on point, and that we're getting them from everybody at this point now. So it's been, thanks for the question, and hopefully that helped answer that.
Thanks. Yeah, so I think last year, you talked about some state funding for Terminal 6, so could you update us on status of that funding and how that interacts with the Harbor Industries' operations of the terminal?
Sounds good. Thank you for that question, Commissioner Dave Robertson again. Kimberly and I will tag-team this question, and I'll talk a little bit about the government part, and then Kimberly can talk about the business plan part. So last we met, and we, we were talking to you a year ago, the governor had put out a plan for a $40 million plan to, to support T6, and asked us to, to develop a business plan by August. So the good news is, we've made great progress in the last year on this. The $40 million plan included a few components. One was $20 million in capital investment at Terminal 6 that the state would contribute. The second is $15 million for dredging, and then there was a $5 million component for on, to help support us with our ongoing losses at T6 while we were in this next year of trying to figure out this, this, the plan and get it in place. And so, we delivered the plan to the governor in August. We had great support from her. Not only did we deliver that plan, she's, she put $35 million in her budget, and we were able to get another $5 million in the budget rebalance, the, the $5 million that I mentioned for ongoing support in March. And so, the $35 million is in her budget, it's been moving its way through the legislative process, and we've had support from Democrats and Republicans on both, both, both sides of the aisle. We've had many hearings on this, and now we're kind of at the last 18 days of the legislature, but 18 days and five hours, but who's counting, knocking on wood, that will make it in the final budget package. It's, we're asking for lottery-backed bonds for both the dredging, the $15 million for dredging, and the $20 million for capital. And so, it's, it, we've had great support, and I don't, not, I shouldn't, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the support from a lot of the stakeholders as well. And I mentioned them on trade, that they're the same, the same businesses that both bring products in at Terminal 6 and then are making things here, growing things here, and shipping them out. So they, they've also been very active at the legislature in helping to move this, this package through. But with that, I'll give you, Kimberly.
Thanks, Dave. And I'll just note that our public affairs team has been leading, has been leading that really essential work, and the plan that Dave mentioned, there's basically three legs of that stool for the business plan that the port put together at the governor's direction. The first is that funding, so the $40 million. The second was to negotiate a agreement so that we would have a private operator and would no longer operate the terminal ourselves. And then the third is really increasing volume and throughput over the next five to 10 years. So Dave gave you the update on where we are with the critical resources. I'm pleased to share that we had, after negotiating a framework agreement with Harbor in December, have a fully negotiated lease that we will be bringing to our board for consideration in July. And we would anticipate that that would, if adopted, and, and if all things, that all the contingencies move forward as anticipated, then those operations would be transferred by the end of this calendar year. And, and, you know, we're, we're taking a close look on the volumes, that's something that we'll need to work with Harbor on over the long term to make sure that they're successful, because ultimately, that's what's going to create the success long term. But the narrow path that has been identified really relies on making sure that the legislature and labor and the port and Harbor all sort of do their part, and we are cautiously optimistic that that will happen, but we'll have more to report in July and August.
Just to follow up, we have some time, so we can keep you here. I'll be brief. But so, with a private operator, is that, is you going to, are there staff at the port who are going to be reduced, or that shifted? And is that going to result in budget savings to the port? Or how are you looking at that?
Great question. So the, there are four FTE positions within marine facilities maintenance that would be reduced as a result of this agreement, if it's approved with Harbor. There are three people in those four positions, and we have offered that all three of those individuals could be employed within our PDX maintenance facility. So there won't be any individual who, all individuals will have options to stay employed at the port, but those FTE would be reduced.
Thanks. And I guess what is the?
On the cost savings, Antoinette, do you want to speak to that?
So, yeah, so I would just point to, if you look in the budget book, from last year's budget to this year's budget, we were pretty intentional, intentional about keeping our FTEs flat. So last year, we were budgeted at 902, this year, 901.8, so 902. Where we will see, we won't have any, any savings necessarily, and the, the only thing that I would just point to is that, like, a number of folks, you know, our personnel expenses are increasing, right? But all of that is, is consistent with what you all see in the budget, right? So no additional, no additional savings if we stay flat.
Maybe just to, to add on, from a financial perspective, the direction that we were given was to make sure that we were not investing more than about $5 million a year in container terminal, in container operations at the terminal going forward, and so, the lease would achieve that. If you look at our budget right now, we're anticipating 13-plus million dollars a year in losses. And so, there's a lot of different reasons that those savings would, are anticipated. Part of that is because we're currently responsible for the capital investments, and so, the resources from the legislature really significantly insulate us from those costs. But also, just you've heard about the volatility with container service, and it's really challenging on the public side, since we have a pretty steady rate of expenditures, to be as flexible as you, as the private sector can be. And so, some of the ups and downs, we, if this lease were approved, we wouldn't be seeing because they would be paying us a minimum annual guarantee. So that's the structure financially that hopefully will improve our position while continuing to provide the service to the state.
Thank you. And I guess with Harbor, with the capital investment, Harbor is, they're, they're obviously planning on being profitable, operating the terminal, with just, I guess, the biggest drivers, increased volume coming.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Thank you. It's worth noting here, Matt, it's, it's a really good question. Again, I feel like this is the fun that I get to have. Is that a strategic level? I love starting with that. At a strategic level for us, the container business is really important for that connectivity to markets. And a $5 million loss is a lot for the, for the general fund in particular, because we're not allowed. And a $5 million loss is a lot for the general fund in particular, because we're not allowed to use aviation dollars to support that business. We view it as so critical strategically that the commission has essentially said, if you shut down the container service, how much would it cost you to sustain the terminal, to do the maintenance and the stormwater fees and utilities, security? We think that number's right around $5 million. So the commission told us, we want to do everything we can, everything we can, underlined, to keep container service. And if that means you lose $5 million a year, lose $5 million a year and cross-subsidize with the other port businesses, autos, grain, soda ash, pot ash. The idea being that that container business is highly strategic and we shouldn't afford to lose it. We should do everything we can. So everything that Antoinette and Kimberly have just described and Dave, getting the state's help to say, it's not just a priority for the port, it's a priority for the state to make this happen and maintain that channel, support the crane maintenance and crane capital requirements for the next 3 to 5 years. What we really need is Harbor to succeed, and they're going to have to be more efficient and better at recruiting traffic in. But we want to be partners in that deal, and that's why you hear us saying, it is not going to be easy, but we're all in. We want it to go. And so kudos to the team. They've really tried to do everything that's in our power to make sure we can get across that line. But we also know more than $5 million a year starts digging into what public dollars we have available. And so it's a little bit of a balance of, can we afford to lose $5 million? Short answer, no, but we think strategically it's worth it. More than that, we just start to dig into everything else that we do.
Okay, that will close our discussion for today. I just want to thank everyone for being here. We appreciate the deep bench. The port always brings the table. But also, I think in general, this is one of my favorite places to come. It feels like the port doesn't just talk the talk, right? The shared prosperity isn't just the words on the wall. We hear every year about the work you're doing with the broader county, regional, city, community, to really build a place we all want to visit and live. So I'm just always thankful to come here and hear all the details from all of you. And with that, we have a little bit of business to do. So I will close the hearing and open a regular business meeting of the TSCC. Commissioners, do you have any additional comments on the budget?
I just want, when we get here next year-
We'd love to hear a little bit more about the AI that you mentioned in your opening remarks, but we can do that next year.
I'm super excited about that, okay? Yeah, I'll be ready for you.
Okay. Allegra, can you please share the recommendations for the certification letter?
Yes, I'd be happy to. And first, I would like to take this opportunity to give a public thank you to the port budget and finance staff. We so appreciate our partnership with them throughout the year as we complete our budget review process and just looking at puzzling budget questions and figuring out the right approaches. So thank you. For the fiscal year 2526 approved budget process, we have no objections and we have one recommendation. On review of the port's fiscal year 2324 audit, the TSCC found that the district had expenditures exceeding legal appropriations and the airport construction fund. I do want to say, you know, we've had these conversations before and we understand the difficulty of a commercial enterprise conforming to the requirements of budget law created for tax-dependent organizations, particularly with the capital funds. However, since the port is still subject to Oregon budget law, we recommend implementing process and procedures in order to make it so that's not happening, whether that be, you know, supplemental budgets of a higher level to increase estimated appropriations, but just finding a way to remain in compliance. So we encourage the district to implement enhanced policies. We know some good work has occurred and we saw that last year, so to keep working to mitigate those issues going forward. We as staff found the budget estimates to be reasonable for the purposes stated and in compliance with budget law.
I will say those over expenditures are a struggle for many of our agencies, so we just like to keep you in line. That's our job.
Allegra is here to help.
Yeah, always.
Advice.
May I have a motion authorizing the commission to sign the certification letter with the one recommendation as recommended by staff?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The port's budget is certified by TSCC. Allegra follows up very shortly with your letter so you can package everything for budget adoption. And that will adjourn our meeting today. Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you.